Notice hereby given that a regular meeting with the town, we're going to be in Texas will be held Monday, the fourth day of October, twenty twenty-two at six P M. At the town, we're going to use the city of, we're going to use Texas seven eight five seven eight. Pursuant to the Texas government code, Texas five five one four two seven. One or more members of the town council may attend this specifically video conference before, for the town council will be present. At the above meeting location, the bottom items will be discussed. All the orders, they tell on.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord. Thank you for the many blessings that you bestow upon us every day, Lord. For your grace, Heavenly Father, we ask you to help us tonight to make fair, informed, and balanced decisions for our citizens and the guests of our community. Lord, please be with our military here and abroad, our first responders, all those who serve others, Lord, those who are suffering, grieving, and, Lord, those who just need you the most. In your son's name, you pray.
Councilmember Romero?
Here.
Councilmember Howard?
Here.
Councilmember Tolan?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Warup?
Here.
Councilmember Dago Bale?
Here.
Mayor Carter?
Here.
My open forum, at this time, I am allowed three minutes with persons who address the council on any topic. We have no discussion or formal action taken during this agenda item. You must identify themselves prior, before speaking. Speaker requests for a monthly presentation to the secondary prior to the meeting. We have two of them today. Terry Cephalos. How are you doing tonight, Superintendent?
I'm very great, thank you so much. Am I able to hand out some information? My name is Terry Cephalos. So, humbled to be here before me today. And my presentation today pertains to our upcoming bond election. So, election day, election day will be November the eighth. And the information that I have presented to you is what is it that is involved in our bond? So, our board approved going out for a bond for a twenty-nine million dollar bond. And we have three different propositions. So, Proposition A is for a seventeen million dollar aquatic center. This aquatic center would be fully enclosed, and we have a depiction of what the aquatic center would look like. It would be U L compliant, and our students at the elementary level would be taught the basics of swimming. We provided swim lessons free of charge, and swimming would be part of the curriculum that would be part of the school date. We would continue at the junior high, and at the high school, we would continue, but with having a swim team. And most of the surrounding districts in the valley have swimming as part of their curriculum. We're surrounded by water. Our kids deserve to be taught how to swim as part of our curriculum. So seventeen million dollar would be for the aquatic center and for acquisition of land. Proposition B would be for district-wide renovation and additional safety measures. We know that the past couple of months, the district had implemented and utilized other funds from a previous fund. Part of it is to provide additional upstating at the campuses. You may have seen at the, further the high school, right, front of Highway one hundred, that we have a fence that is going up. We included a security guard shot, and both of the elementary campuses now have additional fencing that is going up. Security is the top priority for our school district. Proposition B would allow for additional district-wide renovations and security measures, including furniture upgrades for our students and our staff members. Proposition C would be for our athletic department, two point five million dollars would be for an additional, I mean, a new upgraded scoreboard, additional stadium seating. Have you been to our football games lately? There is not an empty seat in the area. Our community is coming out and, and having a good time. It's not just about the sport, but it's part of our culture, our community, and our families enjoy going out to a football game. So additional theme concessions down in restroom upgrades and additional sidewalk and overall stadium upgrade. So how is this possible? Last year when we went out for a bond, we told the community, we will not increase our tax rate, our tax rate will remain the same. And in the flyer, does that make sense?
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional information on our website. Thank you.
Jackie Boyd is venue.
Hi, guys. I had the pleasure of meeting today, and I learned what she's done last year in the school. They went from six programs to fifteen, teaching children have engineering, and then all kinds of noticing and health. And so to me, they're trying to help these kids, because if you remember, you guys know, I don't know how many percent, but eighty or ninety percent of the kids in this area are under poverty level. So, and their parents probably have finished high school or college. And this is a way for them to see that they can, you know, make, have a nerve or become an engineer or better their life, right? So, I would like for her to see what they can do about it. We've been on the cure, we've been on the therapy, saying, I don't think we can make it, no, it's in the public report that this bond is not going to be in recessions, if we can do. Okay, so if you guys can fix, you know, they keep their heads together, and let's think, say what we can do, and I would like to help whenever I can. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
New business, testing iteration of one black month to follow night on number one minute. September seventh, twenty twenty-two, special town council.
Thank you.
Twenty-two, ready to town council meeting. September twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two, special town council. Motion approved, you know, second, fourteen, twenty-eight. Motion made by Councilmember Warup.
Councilmember Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Warup?
Yes.
Councilmember Dago Bale? Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Number two, financial report, review of monthly reports, ready.
So what we provided for you is the statement of revenues and expenditures, and that just shows everything from ten-one to date, which is obviously only a couple of weeks away. The next document that's provided is the check register, anything that was cut since our, this, this run from nine-nine to ten-twelve, so the last time you saw the check register to today. And then the last, the, the next two documents are just the summary budget sheets, those are the ones you're used to seeing for the revenue and the summary budgets starting in ten-one. So it's kind of the kind of scare you normally see. And then you have the balance sheet. So, anyone have any questions? We're meeting with Moises to close out our books towards the end of October, to close out our books, we're scheduled to do for this fiscal year already to start. I think they've already sent us our one drive folders, we can start uploading some of the documents. And then as soon as we have, that we're on their schedule for, for January, but depending if we can get the documents to them sooner, sometimes they can get to us sooner. So hopefully, we'll have the audit, you guys, by February, at least.
Yes. Are you still thinking about hiring additional help in the number account?
Yes. As, as far as I know, that was the board's wishes to hire somebody else. I would like, obviously, Moises is going to help us close out the books, but the, the process to find someone with, needs to be started. It hasn't, I haven't talked to anybody yet of yet, but it's still the intention.
What do you, do you need anything from us to be questioned, or do you?
Um, if anybody has any recommendations as far as who I should reach out to, I want to work with Mayor Carter as far as, like, qualifications, because it's kind of, they actually have government experience, they have to have this and that. So, you know, I want to, obviously, I'm going to get input on what the job description would be and the qualifications would need to be.
And, and I've reached out to people.
So I'm picking.
And what?
We saw.
Yeah.
I've reached out to multiple, you know, multiple people that I know in the industry. Sorry.
But I, I know a couple of people that have the experience that you described, you know.
The government experience and some city experience, like city administration. Okay.
I didn't know, yeah, I said anything to the person, because I don't, I don't, I didn't know where we stood on the project.
Yeah, I, I'm open to talking to anybody, I mean, and obviously, with you. No, we, you and I were going to go over the, what? Posted. So when I posted, and I want to make sure to, to tell them, we just have to go through the, the exact criteria that we want to make sure that they, that they have. So, but I would, you know, and obviously, we can send it to them once it's posted.
Because I didn't say to them the person, because I didn't know, you know.
Yeah, and I, I just, we're waiting for this, we're going to start and sort of do that. I know, but you can't hurt, I mean, you know, any extra double checking internal support. Yeah.
Anybody else? All right, number three, resolutions, twenty-two eighteen, hazard mitigation plan, consideration of possible actions to approve resolution twenty-two, twenty-two, that, for the town, we're going to use the approved hazard mitigation action plan.
So this is the same, we've been a part of the mitigation action plans, the document, or, uh, this is what we have to be a part of. So if FEMA were to declare a disaster, we had any natural disasters, we are grouped with Cameron County, along with a lot of the other surrounding cities. So if we were to have a disaster of some sort, this document is what we need to have in place that would secure us funding from FEMA. Well, the resolution, the document itself is over a thousand pages. So, yeah, you guys, there's a link I can give you.
Yeah.
No, no, well, this adopts that document. Yeah, yeah, this, this adopts that document. Yeah, no, no, this isn't the plan itself, this is just Laguna Vista adopting this plan. And.
Which is something we always have to solve.
Yeah, yeah, we fall under the county for emergency management, so we follow their plan, otherwise, we go out on our own, and we don't have access to all the county, you know, resources, so.
This is the first thing you bring.
It's just a resolution.
Oh, just wanted to move forward with resolution twenty-two, seventeen, consideration that's that approving of the hazard mitigation action. I'll second. Resolution twenty-three two dash eighteen, hazard mitigation plan. Motion by Councilmember Gonzalez, seconded by Councilmember Howard.
Councilmember Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Warup?
Yes.
Councilmember Dago Bale?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yeah.
Number four, ordinance twenty-two oh seven, consideration of possible action on the first reading of ordinance concerning regulation of liquid petroleum gas.
Mayor, councilmembers, this is a brand-new item. It's a resolution that I'm, I'm, ordinance, I'm writing, it rose out of a citationation by code to company that installs liquid, we're being emitting gas equipment in the town. Our code enforcement issue is a style of ordering citation for the ordinance language to the installer. I got a call from an attorney who represents association of liquid gas providers in Texas. Who pointed out, and, and I believe he's correct, that as a result of legislative change back in two thousand eleven, municipalities can't impose any different or additional regulations, we'll adopt it by railroad. And our, while our zoning authority, which is the source of the citation, doesn't specifically regulate liquid gas, it incorporates regulation by reference to the plumbing code, the model one code. So, long and short of it is, where I agree that didn't have the citation, didn't have the ordinance issuing that citation, that was just meant to support. But he's also recommending that, and I agree that this is something that we have a requirement search that removes any references that our existing ordinance structure might have to outdated regulations that aren't in the company with the railroad issues. He, he does this around state, so he happened to have a draft that I looked at. It's very, very simply, all it does is say whatever ordinance you had that supports to regulate natural, I'm sorry, liquefied gas in violation of the resource zone, the rules are validated, and we're just adopted. So, so I'm recommending that we adopt this ordinance, and that will move the issue of code enforcement requirements, but don't issue any more citations under that, under that ordinance, it's not, it's not something we can do as of two thousand. Apparently, it's not something we've been actively policing or regulating, this one just came up. This one just happened to catch the attention of that association of less providers.
How does it differ from what we have?
What we have now incorporates language that isn't made with conformity with the Texas specific and railroad issues. Language, it's, we've adopted a model, which is nationwide, so, so documents that are out there for safety purposes. But, but the regulations are different, they're not sourced to the railroad commission. There, there are statistics in there that I haven't looked at, at each specific way with regulation different, in other words, it reminds me some things there that says connections to the half ages of three quarters. I didn't analyze it, but, but it's, it's a vice that's a regulation. We're not probably railroad commission, therefore, outside of that, this is only.
Now, isn't it the railroad commission that was in charge of?
I, I couldn't remember whether I had a discussion with this council about that. The railroad commission made a clean this law, they don't regulate railroads, they just regulate road parts. And, and that, you know, that example, or that, that regulation that applied to the county, for, for some regulations. Another example, that's just to go into Texas, they're sending you. They convince, or, this town, I know we talked about that. But this one, this one three days, or reason, this will go back to two thousand eleven, it never came up until one.
I have a question. Can you explain the citation?
It was just a citation for hooking, hooking up a, a natural gas generator, or liquefied gas system to the generator without going through the town's regulatory process. We're doing something. So, so.
I decided, for example, I had that. So, liquid, liquid gas, like, how does that change anything?
It, it mentioned so that no one in the town can impose any kind of regulation or citation, any kind of violation for anything that you're doing with that gas system.
It's natural.
Right, yeah, well, yeah, well, it's meaningful, it's, it's, it's many, not, 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 your natural gas, we lose differently, that more utility. Liquidized petroleum, referred to in this one, is, is the gas brought to the site.
So where does it seem? Yeah, I'm sorry, we're going to be basically clean of having doing the district. So the railroad commission changed the laws, and because of the change, well, there was nothing we can, we can have.
Legislature that changed law, the new law, new back in two thousand eleven, saying, the railroad commission sets the rules, and no other government has the authority to give anything different. But this one doesn't just imply that we're going to be following the railroad commission regulations over liquefied products that are stored in people's house, the storage tank, as opposed to whatever prior, whatever we add. And eventually, we're, we're going to go in when we do, we take a look at review of our zoning, go in and do specific cleanup with regard to anything that might be outdated, like regulations or law. This, this one just allows us to say, look, it's, it's invalid now, so we can take it closer to the right. And adopt some rules that are conforming, adopt our own rules that are conforming with railroad. So then, whatever the railroad commission rules are, those are the ones that should be dodged.
So do we know, which, we really don't have another choice.
Yeah, the, the consequences for continuing to regulate an area that the statute said we can't regulate would be that we would be subject to some kind of declaratory judgment action or some kind of lawsuit in court. And considering the, the low level of regulatory activity that we already had in that area, I'm not recommending that it's a challenge.
So there wouldn't be a big negative effect of all accidents?
Yeah, that's right, as far as I know, this is the only one that, that has been, the only citation of this kind that would be issued ever since I've been here. I mean, it could have been others at this point, it didn't rise to the level, or get the attention of the city. But this is the only one that I've seen, certainly, prosecuted, more than.
Do, do, do they still have to go get a permit, and do they have to get it inspected?
But they, we won't have the authority to get to do any kind of inspection over the gas systems. We still, we still have the ability to inspect everything, to know if that the gas is so.
So who is in charge in making sure that the guy who put it in did it right?
The, the rail.
So, so no one's going to inspect it?
Yeah.
And we can, we've had a lot of these issues that they go forth, and I, I know specifically where this came from, okay? And, and they, people were citing the railroad commission. And I just could not believe that the fact that they don't have to get it inspected.
They just do the work, our, our regulator, they have a license permit issued through that, and so they've got to comply with those. But, but we, but they, you know, they have their own enforcement, we don't, we don't have to go into going, of course.
Can we make sure that we are notifying them that they need to inspect that?
That, that, that the.
That the city, that we as a city will notify the railroad commission that they have to inspect it, and we ask for.
They, they don't inspect it on an individual basis, they, they just regulate the ability of the company.
Industry.
Industry.
So there was no, no inspection of like appropriate tank within.
Right, to make sure that, that individual job could buy, buy this. And, and of course, that's, that's a consequence of that old, you know, twelve-year-old legislation that's in two thousand. Ever since then, cities, there's one city that, that tried to fight this. The city used, the law that the Supreme Court gave on all with.
Oh, wow.
Supreme Court, three percent known statute, so it said, cities don't have that regular authority. I mean, I, I, it's not one, it's not a fight that I would.
Yeah.
So basically, you give him the.
The history.
Well, that usually also the level of involvement that the town has.
The Houston campaign.
That's kind of scary.
Well, it's hearing that, you know, it's, you know, win or lose that kind of thing, but it's, it's the kind of, it's a kind of regular, it's almost a social that towns where we're raised is all the time, they're always, they're always, it's kind of, it requires a lot of work of that staff. In this case, it's just got one.
So, so are you going to bring the new documents, the new reservations?
No, we, we, we won't, we won't have any.
Somebody said about it.
We're not, we're not. That's why he's glad. Yeah, we've got to do it, we've got the most recent balancing that lost, that issue. The same lawyer and the same organization is sitting, they pursue over the same kind of citation to issue. I'm not sure why that came to a lawsuit in our, our, is getting resolved, but, but somebody felt sorry. To maybe try, in resolving that, that, that lawsuit. But it was involving paper and the entity that brought it, that, that, that city.
I move to approve the first reading of ordinance two zero two two oh seven concerning regulation of liquefied petroleum gas.
Ordinance twenty, nineteen oh seven. Motion by Commission Member Tolan, seconded by Councilwoman Howard.
Councilmember Romero?
Yes.
Yeah. Councilmember Howard? Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Warup? Councilmember Dago Bale? Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Number five, Parks Master Plan, consideration of possible action to approve CDC funding for the preparation and communities that Parks Master Plan and Development.
So I updated the board on this a couple meetings ago, so the CDC met last week, and they approved the spending of twenty thousand dollars to create the Parks Master Plan and for the grant application. And so it is coming to the town council for ratification.
We've been in contact with, with the grant writer.
With Patty. Um, not recently, I touched base with her when the ad was posted and kind of gave her the timeline and told her that I would let her know when it was approved, but I haven't, I was waiting to talk to this meeting to reach out to her.
Where is the, where is Alexander Business Development, is that from the grants?
No, no, so this is Patty Alexander, she comes highly recommended, she actually wrote, she writes the Parks Master Plan for, I think, Port Isabel, Los Presnos, and a couple of the other surrounding cities. She very, comes very highly recommended, she got some of the grants that got the all-inclusive parks in Harlingen and Brownsville. And, and she actually did some work in Laguna Vista, but at the early stages of the Eco Tourism Center, right before that, so that's who she is.
She, she does a lot of work for the county.
Very well connected.
Oh, I don't think a motion to approve the Parks Master Plan funding from the CDC.
Councilmember Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Absolutely.
Councilman Warup?
Yes.
Councilmember Dago Bale?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yeah.
Yeah. Looking forward to this one again, yeah. Number six, security cameras, consideration of possible action to approve CDC funding for security cameras for the town of the movie stuff.
So this is, same thing, it came to the CDC and last week, it was voted upon. They approved to spend twenty-five thousand dollars to re-bam the security system for the town. This will link to new security cameras for the security, for the city hall building, the fire station and the library. The library apparently does not have any cameras, so it'll be added security there. The system that we are going with will be compliant with the N D A A system, which means that there, there are certain laws for governmental entities for security cameras, but you can't just go down and buy your security system at Sam's. Has to go through certain distributors, so all of these cameras fall under that. The system itself will. The system itself will come with a, I believe it's a I think it's a three day memory, but we can, we can extend it if we need to, so it'll, it'll hold everything for three days. So, you know, if something's vandalized or anything like that, we have the ability to, the storage capacity to hold it for three days. And then it'll start to replace itself. This gives a monitoring system in the chief of police office. It'll give it out in the, the police station themselves, so when they're in here having to do reports, they can still be monitoring, you know, around the city. And if, if so desired, they can also have it enacted on their, their tablets, their computers, once we get their computers in their car. You know, so if they're doing patrol, they can still be watching the library, or they can still be, so it's giving them a lot more versatile, versatility.
So, the system, would it be able to add on more cameras?
Yes, we can, we can add on more cameras, and actually, that's, I'm glad you asked, because hopefully, we will be able to my just off the cuff idea, I want it, we need to get some sort of power out at the walking trail, so I can put cameras at the walking trail. I was trying to include them in this bid, but there's no power at the walking trail. So my idea is to put a restroom of some sorts out there, where we can get some sort of electricity, and then we can run the cameras, but it was gonna be too big of a project. So it's going to be a phase two. So we will add cameras, hopefully, at the walking trail entrances, and maybe at each of the eight frames, just for security purposes.
And right now, did I read correctly, it was like twenty six cameras, or nineteen, what was nineteen?
Nineteen cameras, and that'll include, yeah, so it's four at the library, five at the fire department, and ten at city hall. And that'll get the parking lot here. Oh, no, so it'll, it'll get the parking lots, so the ones at city hall will also include, like, the ones that'll go up this way, that'll get the parks, it'll get the bar, the Devo. It'll get the restrooms, and then it gets, like, right now, we have, I mean, we can't even get anything here in a parking lot, we have nothing right now.
Is, is the CDC picking up the whole tab for the installation?
The installation, the cameras and everything, twenty five thousand will cover all that. We will maintain within our I T contract, if there's any maintenance or things like that going on. But it'll all fall under our I T contract that the city will maintain, but they, they will, the, the, the cost of the cameras and the install will be done by this twenty five thousand.
What would we anticipate the consequences?
It, it, very minimal, because once he sets it up, it's all, it, it, you know, he can log in through the, just like he does our computer maintenance app. He does it from his business there, so, I mean, unless the camera maybe were to get busted out, or we have something that he has to do a physical house call. But it, it should be minimal.
And the installation of the cameras will be high enough so vandalism will be
Yeah, I mean, they'll be at the top of the building, you know, as, as far up as, as they can, and they're, the outside ones are obviously designed to be weather, weather resistant and things like that, so they should have a longer lifespan, and so we won't be having to replace them as often. I mean, they are outside in the faulty C air, but, you know.
Make a motion to approve.
I was just gonna say thank you for this, because this item has been on, in the wing for a while. I wasn't at the CDC, and I apologize for that, but I'm just curious, did the CDC all agree to this? Was it unanimous?
Yes.
I think, let me just say, I think this is a great project, and it's, it's, and it's necessarily needed, I just find it I just find it a strange project for the CDC to take on. It's not, security cameras is not something that I find appropriate, or it's not an appropriate expenditure, I think, for it's not community development, it's not developing community, it's not helping economic development, or community development. You know, and, and I just think that's something that as a council, as a CDC, as we go forward, I think we just need to guard against that, I think we just need to, just take a look at, as we go to them, you know, to, to purchase things for our community, I think it's great, that they have money and they're willing to spend it. But I just think that's something that we all just need to be aware of, think about when they, when they go to spend. And I, and I know that I missed a lot, a lot of urgent meetings. And for that, I do apologize. It just seems like this might have been something we can spend smart money on. I just, you just, you just need to be cautious about that. They certainly can spend their money on whatever they want, but we are also taking about our reason, because we are a lot shocked over this, or we wouldn't, or we wouldn't take it, they can spend money.
Traditionally, the CDC, then we'd go to the CDC, the community improvement and stuff, and we check in with issues, it's all, I mean, the brim of legal, just been CDC funds on, but they've been, they've been real dealt to us in the past. Doing community improvements and having, keeping it out of the general fund, they've got the money. And it loses the benefit of community, or it's probably the problem.
I guess this, this project, just like, like all the others, has got legality. I think I, not everybody that's on council now, like I've been on council in my last talk about the expanded ability of communities in town, uh, statute to, to engage products that aren't necessarily tied to some kind of commercial. And so, and so that, this, this fall under, not only that, but also commercial opportunities that aren't directed to, to commerce, but that, that can't see the commercial bar.
I don't know which case, TV cameras?
Mr. Jones?
Make a motion.
Approved, CDC funding of security cameras for the town.
Security cameras, consideration of possible action to approve specific funding of the security cameras for the town in Vista. Motion by Dr. Romero, seconded by Councilmember.
Councilmember Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yeah.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Warout?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGobert?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yeah. Item number seven, travel, consideration of possible action to improve travel for officer Gray, proved to attend trauma-informed sexual assault and domestic violence seminar in Austin, Texas. Between November sixth and November tenth.
So we're just asking for the council's approval to, for Officer Cruz to go to the training. So he'll leave November sixth, or the training is from November sixth to November tenth.
What is, and then go, you know, and say, then move that training back and just
Yes, so these are training officers, so he'll do the training, and then he will come back, and am I saying that correctly? And then, yeah, he'll train the trainer, and then he'll train the rest of you.
Motion. The travel for sexual assault. Motion by Commission Member Gonzalez, seconded by Mayor Carter.
Councilmember Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yeah.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Warout?
Yeah.
Councilmember DeGobert?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. Number eight, do it by the bay, consideration of possible action to improve the hosting of the sixth annual do it by the bay January twenty ninth to twenty twenty three. I can't believe it's the sixth annual.
So basically, we're just coming for the council's approval, since it is a city sanctioned event, and so we can see your approval on the date, there's nothing on the calendar.
Make a motion to approve the do it by the bay, January twenty nine, twenty twenty three, six and seven.
Do it by the bay, consideration of possible action, do the hosting, six annual, do it by the bay, and on January twenty nine. By Councilmember Howard, seconded by Councilmember Tolan.
Councilmember Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yeah.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Warout?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGobert?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. Number nine, meeting dates, consideration of possible actions on the dates for town, town.
So a couple months back, we changed our, temporarily changed our regular meeting dates to be on Wednesdays instead of Tuesdays. I believe that ended at the, this meeting, so we need to decide going forward. So the, the next meeting technically would be Tuesday, the eighth, which is election day. So we need to decide two things, one, if we want to go back to Tuesday meetings, then when? And if we're gonna have the Tuesday meeting next month, where? Because this place will be full of voting machines. So, because they don't post till, I think.
I think we should just have a next Wednesday. For next month, but then after that, go back in all time anyway.
So, so do it, so November ninth, and then continue in Tuesday, starting
In January, move that on together.
Is that what it is? All right, I don't know that that needed I got it.
Anybody wants?
I cleaned my office and everything, yeah?
Seconded by Warout. Don't forget your candy.
Councilmember Howard?
Yeah.
Councilmember Tolan?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Warout?
No.